I'd like to welcome everyone to our May 18th Planning Board meeting. Those that's in the audience, those that's joining us by television, at this time we have our roll call.
RJ Hamby.
Here.
Amy Herring. Ricky Hines.
Here.
Plate Malloy Jr.
Here.
Matt Nobles.
Here.
Johnny Penner.
Yeah.
Kenneth Ross.
Yeah.
Danny Smith.
Here.
At this time, we're all standing, and we'll have our prayer by Johnny and our Pledge of Allegiance by RJ.
Let's pray together. Lord, we give you thanks for this day that you've given us. We thank you for the blessings of each one of us and joy. We just ask you be with us now as we go about this agenda, that any and all decisions that we make may be in the best interest of all parties, and we just ask all that in your name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
I declare the flag of the United States of America to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item is the rezoning administration.
We need approval minutes.
Oh, yeah, we need approval minutes for our last meeting schedule.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, then approve. Now we get our first man, Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have a rezoning request on the agenda tonight from Baldwin Design Consultants. Before I begin, I'd like to mention each of you, in front of you, has a copy of the letter from Mr. Baldwin requesting on behalf of the owners to continue the request until the June 22nd meeting, due to being informed of concerns from neighbors in the area that they'd like to address before your consideration. We didn't get the letter till a little after four o'clock today, and I know we have several folks here in the audience that are probably here to speak tonight, so we'd like to request that before the board considers the postponement of any decision, that we'd be allowed to go ahead and go through our staff report and also take any public comments.
I make a motion to go ahead and take and go through our staff report, and let's go ahead with it.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Let's go ahead with it, because it's the 11th hour, we're getting a request to postpone something, and all these folks up here, I'm not going to inconvenience.
Okay. Tonight, the request is by Baldwin Design Consultants to rezone approximately 5.3 acres. It's located on Eastern Pines Road, parcel number 50801, from rural residential to general commercial conditional district, and that's to allow the operation of a self-storage facility, otherwise known as Stokes Mini Storage. And you have a copy of the site plan in your agenda packet, and we'll go through that here in just a second. You see the site here, looking on Eastern Pines Road, it's just south of its intersection with LT Hardy Road. Brittany Ridge subdivision is located to the north, Brandy Creek to the south, as well as some other subdivisions that are within the city of Greenville's ETJ, located towards the west. This is the site plan. You see there are, the area highlighted in red is the boundary of the track itself. There are several proposed storage buildings you see highlighted in gray. There is some existing and proposed vegetation being proposed. They're proposing a 10-foot vegetative buffer along the front with trees and shrubs, as well as a combination of existing trees and proposed trees around the side and rear of the property. There's some fencing that's being proposed, some, towards the side and rear, there's going to be a six-foot chain link fence with three strand barbed wire, and along the front will be a six-foot aluminum security fence that'll be ornamental. And then there is a 50-foot riparium buffer to the west and north of the property that runs along the creek there. These are some pictures of the property itself. You see, it's primarily in agricultural use, there are several agricultural buildings on the property, as well as an existing communications tower. This is another view of the property towards the southeastern side of the property. That open shelter you see there is proposed to remain, and they're going to add on to that for part of the storage facility. This is looking to the west, is if you're heading back towards Greenville, towards LT Hardy Road, and then towards the east, if you're heading towards the other end of Portertown Road, and towards like the Eastern Pines Fire Station and Eastern Pine Water Corporation. There are a couple of existing commercial uses in the area. This is the Little A's Repair Shop, which is located to the east, and it's located behind a residential building there. Then there's an existing daycare building, which, from what we can tell, is a vacant daycare business, but that property's also is owned commercial. The entrance to Brandy Creek, which is located to the south of the property, directly across from it, and then also Brittany Ridge, which is located again towards the northern three sides of the property. And then this is Jennifer Place, which is the road that runs parallel to the northern side of the property, with residential properties in Brittany Ridge adjacent to it. So if you were to look right behind these houses is the property in question. And then some adjacent properties, some adjacent residential properties are located on Eastern Pines Road, Eastern Pines Road here too again. So the 2030 Comprehensive Land Use Plan designates this area suburban residential. You see all that on the yellow, and again, the blue is the city of Greenville's ETJ. Suburban residential is intended to include residential land uses and limited multifamily, commercial, office, light industrial, and public institutional uses that meet locational criteria, and that criteria is typically location along a major thoroughfare or at a major intersection, proximity to similar commercial zone uses, and also to provide spatial separation from what we call non-compatible uses, like the residential properties. Suburban residential is distinguished by the greater potential for development and the inclusion of a broader range of land uses. This is the existing land, you should see it is predominantly residential around there. There are a couple spots of commercial zone, or commercial uses around the area. And then the zoning map, you see, again, the Little A's and the daycare center, which were existing prior to zoning, are zoned commercial, and the rest of it is zoned rural residential. And again, these, those two properties there were initially zoned commercial because they were in existence at the time we adopted countywide zoning. So the general commercial district is intended to accommodate a range of retail, service, office, limited wholesale, and moderate density multifamily uses in those areas that have access to major thoroughfares and the necessary utilities to support such development. And being that it's a conditional zoning district, that does allow for the approval of a proposal for a specific use with reasonable conditions to ensure compatibility with neighboring properties. So again, the proposed use is a self-storage facility, so again, with a conditional district, that is what it'd be limited to. If they wanted to change it to a different commercial use, they'd have to go back through the rezoning process again. As part of our staff recommendation, and we reviewed it with the consistency with the land use plan, we find that the request is not consistent with the land use plan. Again, it is suburban residential, which does allow for a broader range of uses, but it does not meet the locational criteria. It's within a heavily populated residential area with relatively few general commercial zone properties that within close proximity. And also, we find the request is not reasonable and is not in the public interest because of the residential nature of the area, and because the use is relatively large scale, it's approximately 5.3 acres, and it does not provide any significant separation from the surrounding land uses. So we do, as staff, we do recommend denial of the request for the property to be rezoned from rural residential to the general commercial conditional district for operation of a self-storage facility. And again, also advises not reasonable and not within the public interest and not consistent with the county's land use plan. Again, we'd like to go ahead and entertain public comments, which time the board would typically make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, but again, you do also have a request in front of you to postpone the decision to the June Planning Board meeting. If it continues on for tonight, or continues on as currently scheduled without a postponement, the request would be heard by the Commissioners at a public hearing on June 20th, and they would take action on that request at that time. So again, Mr. Chairman, we'd like to open up for public comments, and then hear the board's decision on the postponement.
Okay. Our first speaker would be Tammy Byrd. She'll come forward and state her name.
Tammy Barnhill Byrd. I live on, at 4920 Eastern Pines Road. I live right beside the daycare. The daycare is a nuisance. It has been not in use for two years. Water was turned off last July. Nobody keeps it up. I am doing partially cutting part of their grass, and that's a commercial building there that's already a problem to the neighborhood. I also would like to state that my letter is dated May the 6th, and I received it a week later, so we have not had time to rediscuss or gather people to come to this. My thing is having this there, it is in a very bad curve. School buses are already having issues in that curve when you're picking up children and letting off. When storage buildings are built, they're okay for some time, and then they turn into garage sales. I've seen quite a few storage buildings now are filled with junk, and you're having yard sales out of it on a daily basis. Traffic will increase. Our speed limit is 45, and it needs to be changed. People are driving too fast when you're in that curve. And also, there is a possibility that it is going to decrease our property and our housing values if something like this is built.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Pamela is next.
I'm Pamela Franks. I live right directly across from the mini storage that they want to build, 4946 Eastern Pines. I live next to the daycare also. The daycare splits us. My concern is, I have a child that catches the bus, and there's times where I'm almost scared that they're not going to stop at that curve right there, because they have almost missed the stop sign to where you're supposed to stop at the bus. So that is one of my concerns right there. My other concern is, is that there's a ditch that separates that land that goes underneath the road there, Eastern Pines Road, and it's already clogged up. Like, it causes, it's going to cause some more friction in my ditch to wash away my driveway, and I'm afraid that all that stuff that's going to happen at the storage unit, is it going to affect that ditch in there? Because that ditch comes from Brittany Ridge all the way through. And there's a sign right there that states that, you know, beware of high water. It's already starting to, it's going to head down into the ditch eventually. It's going to be there anytime when we get a bad storm. That's my other concern is. My other, my other one is, how many storage units are they having in there? I mean, how many does it really hold? And, you know, are we, what is the, what's the hours of them already? You know, are they going to be able to go in there at all nights of the hour? Are they going to be able to go just during the day? You know, we've already had a four-wheeler stolen at our house this year, just past Christmas. So, I mean, I just don't really want to have that storage unit there, but I really want to know the answers to those questions.
How long, I'm sorry, how long have you been in the area?
I have, I have lived there since, let's see, eight years.
Eight years.
Eight years.
How long?
How long have you been there?
My husband's been there since 98.
Okay.
I purchased the land from Hardy eight years ago to build a house there.
Okay.
You know. And my understanding was, is that piece of lot was supposed to go towards Brittany Ridge to make a clubhouse and a pool. I understand Mr. Stokes passed away. You know, I'm friends with the family, I know their sons, I, grandsons play ball, all that. I, you know, I understand that completely. I'm not sure what happened with that property, but I just really would rather not see the traffic, and she's right about that. I mean, they come barreling down there like there's no tomorrow. I, I'm almost scared to even have my child catch the bus. I've had them put a sign out there, and they took it down last year, so.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, Francis Johnson.
I guess I live at 5075 Eastern Pines Road, which is several neighbors away from the property. Two points. One, with a moderate rain, our ditches fill up, and really concerned about the proposed retention pond, the amount of concrete and asphalt that would cover the property. Did not see any plans for a retention pond, don't know if that's a code or not. The other point would be, we live adjacent to five vacant acres, and so this would set the wrong precedent for the possible rezoning of those five acres, and would not like to see any, anything commercial in that property next to us.
How long have you lived at?
On the property for about eight years, and lived on the property for about five years.
Five years.
Thank you.
And you're concerned about the rain, the rainwater?
Well, the.
With all the buildings?
The ditches, it's very obvious in Brittany Ridge that how deep the ditches are, and with a moderate rain, the ditch that our property drains into fills up, even with a moderate rain, and it's very slow to run off. So if the runoff from this property was added, then, then it would be a more immediate flood situation. Of course, and with all the concrete and asphalt, there would be no opportunity for the water to soak in, and it would, it would run into these ditches.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And what else, have any questions? Pamela?
Yes, sir. That's me. Just a moment.
Thank you for letting me speak. I'm not very good at speaking in public. I'm Pam Johnson, and I'm Francis' wife. We live at 5075 Eastern Pines Road, about two blocks away from this proposed change. My first concern was I did not receive a letter. We're two blocks away, and I had no idea this was happening. We did pass the sign on the property, driving back and forth to work, but it was only yesterday when I thought, well, because I said, Francis, what if they built a mini, a lot of mini storage, but a quickie mart there? And he was like, no, no, it's going to be houses or something nice, no worries. And I thought, oh, I'm going to call anyway. So I called yesterday, and I found out that it was going to be potentially a mini storage, and I thought, holy cow, oh my goodness. So that's why we're here. And so, multiple storage. There are, I know for a fact, multiple mini storages in our area. They're on some of the main roads, and even back by the, one of the churches behind us. I'm not sure of the names of the streets. I didn't come prepared, since I just found out yesterday, but there are at least three or four that I know of in that area. So I can't imagine we need another hundred or so units of a mini storage in our neighborhood to ruin a nice family and residential area that we live in. Once it's changed to, the zoning has changed, what else could go up in there? I mean, is it strictly going to be that, or could they also open then a mini mart or something in that area? And again, it's, once you open the door, open Pandora's box, it's like anything can happen. I know if you postpone the meeting, there'll be more people here next time who would like an opportunity to speak, because again, I think a lot of people were caught off guard that either didn't get a letter like ourselves, or found out just shortly, a few days ago, and again, have not really been prepared to all come out here en masse. I do agree with everything that's been said so far by Tammy and Pamela, that, you know, the risks of the, of the traffic and the bend in the road and the high speeds. It's a two-lane road, it's not a three-lane road or a four-lane road for passing. And it's not like I want to stop this family or this organization from developing the area. I think there's plenty of room for some nice houses, and you can see from some of the earlier pictures, there are very nice houses on that road. It's not a, it's not a low-class or low, you know, poorly-developed area. It's very nice housing, and it would be an opportunity for them to build houses there, and, you know, that way continue to be a residential neighborhood. I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
And about having any questions, sir?
Okay.
Thank you.
Ken, Kenso, Kenso, sorry.
My name is Tom Kinsey. I hadn't planned on speaking. My wife had written a little letter, and I'm going to read it. 2002, we purchased our home in the quiet residential development of Brittany Ridge. Our home faces Eastern Pines. The address is 2211 Kathleen Drive. We're three lots east of the property, parcel 50801. We're opposed to the rezoning of the property from rural residential to general commercial, which would alter the character of the neighborhood and could decrease the value of our property. Those are our concerns.
Anybody have any questions?
Did you say you did not get a letter?
We did get a letter. I'm not sure exactly when it was dated. It's dated May 6th. I'm not sure when we got it. We got a letter.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mike Baldwin, you want to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commiss, and Planning Board members. I'm Mike Baldwin, and if, I didn't postpone the, or ask for a continuance of the, the meeting at a, at a, at last minute on purpose, I felt like that Chris Stokes, who I've been working with, Ms. Linda Stokes' son, emailed, texted me yesterday and said somebody had been to Ms. Stokes' house, and that there was an email going around Brandy Creek about this. So after thinking about it today, I decided, at the 11th hour unfortunately, it might be best to put it off, so I could meet with some of these people's concerns. One thing that I did do, that I think is important to, and maybe I didn't reach out enough, but I sent letters to the adjoining property owners with the maps of what we proposed to do, so that they could see, because perception is probably the worst thing that can happen in miscommunication in anything. I wanted them to see what the plan showed, so they're, show where we show buffers, the fencing along the road, so they're, I could hopefully relieve some of the, the questions that they have. I did have one call from Mr. Christie, Christie Folk, who lives at the right rear corner of the property. We talked it sometime, and she talked about property values, and not being a realtor or an appraiser of property, I can't answer it for certain, but all I do know is that property values are based on likewise comps. So that is how I see the property's values being. I'm ready to make a presentation, Mr. Ross.
That'll be fine.
Okay.
Because I think that someone wants to know.
Yeah, and I'm.
Have any units and stuff like that.
First, I'd like to hand, give you some handouts.
James, is there any way to put this up on the screen so that people in the audience can see what we're talking about?
No.
Okay.
All right. I think that anybody that knows the property is aware, this is the farming operation, the farming center of the late Mr. Wayne Stokes. His family desires to put a mini storage facility there to be run out of the home of Ms. Linda Stokes. Her daughter lives right across the street, and what is so important are the limitations on this property as it exists right now. If you'll look at the aerial photo that I gave you, all the gravel areas, all the areas that are, that have buildings on it, will not have been compressed, the soils have been compacted, and will not be suitable for septic systems. So we have a lot of challenges on this property. We have the soils issues, and we have the issues of driveway access. If these are, if these were to be turned into, this five acres was to be turned into residential lots, we wouldn't get driveway cuts like they did all along Brittany Ridge back in the late 80s when it was developed. Mr. Stokes and Mr. Leon Hardy, they developed that. Mr. Stokes by himself developed Brandy Creek, but the, so we wouldn't, we would be confined to one access that would, I'm sure DOT would require it to line up with Brandy Creek Drive. Well, you can look, with all the impervious area that's already there, and the limitations of having, not being able to put septic tanks on this area, we would be lucky to get two lots out of this piece, out of this five acres. Normally, we get about a lot an acre when we develop a piece of land. So we have that limitation. The, the comment about increased traffic, unfortunately, that is incorrect. If, if we were able to get five lots on there, that would yield about 50 trips per day, based on this volume of mini storage. It would be about the same. Also, one thing about mini storage is you don't have traffic during your peak hours. People are going to their mini storages normally after work and on the weekends. So the, the issues with the school buses, that's going to continue as normal. Yes, it's in a curve. Yes, Eastern Pines Road is busy, but I think we've mitigated that with this request. Like I said, Ms. Stokes and her children, they wouldn't want to do anything to adversely affect them. They live right across the street. As well, as far as the drainage goes, we are going to be required to attenuate the 10-year storm. So no more runoff would be allowed to leave the site than what exists now. On the plan that I submitted, we propose to put a nice wrought iron fence with columns every 24 feet along the road with extensive shrubbery. There's already a lot of pine trees out there now. We plan to increase the visual barrier by putting evergreen, large evergreen trees in between those, on approximately 25 foot on center, 20 to 25 foot on center. We are going to have a lock, it's going to be a gated entry, it's going to have operating hours of 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. So there's a lot of things that, until I was able to get up here, that these reasonable people had questions about. But we have met with the fire marshal, we've satisfied his concerns as far as being able to put a Knox box so emergency personnel can get in there in the event of emergency. Normally, you don't see a lot of fires in mini storage units, but they, they can happen. Like I said, this has been a farming operation. I've lived in Greenville since 1987. Wayne Stokes lived here since his 50s. His family wants to do something nice with the piece of land. I agree, yes, a commercial use adjacent other neighborhoods, you've got Little A's, Gary Arnold, I've talked to Gary, he's in my Sunday School class, he doesn't have any problem with it, but that's because he's a commercial use. But a mini storage is a non-offensive commercial use.
How many units you going to have out there, storage units?
Mr. Ross, it's, until we would get a little bit farther down the road, it's hard to say. We will have some of the larger units that boats can be put in, but normally, when we get farther down the road, we would go to a company called Betco. They, they build probably the majority of the mini storages in North Carolina, and get what the, what the going size is that is most desired by the users. But when the economy went, went south in 2008, I unfortunately had to go from 7,000 square foot building to a. I unfortunately had to go from seven thousand square foot building to a thirteen-hundred-and-fifty square foot office unit. So, uh, I'm friends of a mini storage because I've got a lot of stuff in a mini storage now. So I, I frequent it a lot and, and there's not a whole lot of traffic. There's not a lot of noise. They're slim to no noise. Uh, the lighting on the, the facility will be on wall packs on the front of the buildings, on the front side. So you're not, we're gonna not, gonna have any overhead lighting. So you'll have light pollution to the, the residents. I think we've done it as, as nice as we can do it, uh, with the fencing. Yes, sir.
Are they gonna be built, I know they're on pads. Is it gonna be raised pads or?
No, it'll be slab on grade, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. If you wrap it up, we'll.
And, and the, and the, the building height, it'll be, already you've got one storage building that we plan on keeping out there to the easternmost side of the site. We plan on keeping that. And that none of the buildings will be any higher than that. The buildings, most of the buildings will be lower than that. So the Stokes, they want to do a good job with it and they want to be good neighbors because they, they live in the neighborhood. So I, I think that says something for itself.
The reason I was asking, because, um, they were talking about water, ponding.
Right.
If you can put a mini storage, if I'm a new one, I don't want it to be backing back up into mini storage.
Right. And, and sure. And, and the way we design, we'll have to design the, the drainage system, sir, that obviously be approved by staff in your, um, engineering, engineering department.
And speaking of the impervious service, um, I, I know you probably don't know until you know about the number of units and the amount of parking area if you will be required to have a retention pond or, um, can you speak to that?
Yeah, Mr. Nobles, what we'll do on this one, uh, since we already have existing impervious area, we're allowed to, uh, buy down the, the nutrient offset and we'll be able to do the, the detention in the parking, in the areas between the buildings. It's like you've seen, it's the soup bowl effect where you, you store the water. The water gets pressure on it and pushes out the pipe.
Okay.
So no to a, because a lot of people consider a, a stormwater pond a nuisance, a, a, a possible hazard for child to get in and critters to get in.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank y'all. And with that said, uh, I'd like y'all to go ahead and act on this, just rescind my, my request to continue this since I've, um, and I don't want to waste these people's time as well.
All right.
Thank y'all.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question about that.
Come up here, young lady.
I am dead serious about this ditch now. This ditch, if you guys wa- if you guys drive out there to this ditch that is before the property and you see there's all this stuff from Britten, from Britten, Britten, Brittany Ridge, and my ditch is five feet high and probably I would say a good eight feet wide. And it carries the water over my driveway because it, it has such a small draining. And if he's talking about having a retention pool there, what, exactly what does that mean? I mean, are we, that ditch there still isn't gonna get fixed. You're putting pavement down there. I, I mean, I'm not, I'm really concerned about that ditch because I really need to have the state come out there and look at it. It does flood over and then it carries on and it floods over my driveway to the point where we're having to try to fix it. But if you go out there and look at it, you'll see what I'm talking about.
That retention pond won't help your ditch. I'll tell you that.
And it's not gonna help Brittany Ridge ditch either.
No. Yes, come round up here.
The, um, water deal is starting back at, um, I believe it's Fairway Drive. We just recently, the DOT came and dug out that side because of the, um, man that's building the house on the corner. He built a house. Now he's in the process of building another house and he has had a very, very hard time with the city with the rules and laws on building because of water. They just came and dug out that. He did not put tile under at his ditch to run down like it's supposed to. We did a long time ago. We have, um, we, we did our ditch like it was supposed to do, the big pipes. We have grates along and, um, our water, we still even with that have issues with our water. And the DOT came out a couple of years ago and dug out the ditches. They repaved the road to raise it and, because water used to sit right there in the, um, creek. And, I mean, it was slammed across the road. Now you're seeing a little bit of water still sitting there. But one issue is DOT. DOT came out. They half did the job. They messed up my ditch. They've never come back and fixed it. I've tried to contact them about getting it fixed. They were just, when they were close by the other day, I said, please come bring some dirt. I'll fix it. They wouldn't do it. They said, you got to call it in. I've called it in. Ain't heard nothing out of them. So, and this man with, that's building those two houses, he's had a big, big issue. If, I can't understand how this could go so smooth and he's had so many issues with trying to get that house, with his houses built. And, um, the, the daycare beside me is, it is not being taken care of. It's, there's nobody coming taking care. They just came this week and I guess it's because of this meeting that they decided to come mow the grass Monday. And I, I, I don't know what's going on with daycare, but I don't think it's correctly being handled.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
I'm gonna ask James something. James, is every, everything out there on septic?
It is. Everything's still on septic there.
Septic out there in that area?
Yes, even the areas in the ETJ before you get out into the county's jurisdiction is still on septic system.
So there's no sewer?
There is no sewer. The closest sewer is on the backside of, um, Lato Drive. What's the name of the subdivision? Arbor Hills. So it's a, pretty much across the street from Lake Glenwood. So you're a ways away. You're probably at least a mile away from this area.
No projected, anything about?
Uh, no, especially with the sewer lines extensions, mostly are gonna go to these undeveloped tracks. Retrofitting in some of these existing neighborhoods will be very expensive. So probably won't see it, uh, in this particular area because a lot of the areas along, as, as been mentioned, a lot of the areas along Eastern Pines have already been developed. Just a random few lots at this point.
Mr. Chairman, I want to, we had a site visit, a site visit on, um, I think it was Monday. And I, I still now have the same concerns I had on the site visit with some of the residents. Brought it clear to my attention. I asked that question when we went out. And that is, I had a problem with the traffic, uh, you know, increasing. And I'm now hearing the residents say the same thing. I had that concern when I, when I did a site visit. That was the traffic. Also, I had a concern about the number of units, uh, still the same concern the residents have. And that's unclear. And also the, the existing units out there, I had a problem with those also. And, uh, in his presentation, I think Mr. Baldwin said that he would keep some of that. And I, I had a issue with keeping any of that because we would have to have a, a different quality to, uh, keep it, uh, continued with the community and have it to, uh, to upgrade the community. And I wanted to put those in there, because.
Okay.
I think this gentleman had something she wanted to say.
Okay, yes, I was just gonna, okay, pretty much, she said, well, this gentleman said, um, my concern was that at this stage of the game, for this very nice gentleman not to know how many units they're planning, when this has obviously been in the planning stages for a little while, I think it's not reasonable not to know about how many units one would anticipate on that amount of property. And also I would just beg you to agree with your own planning and zoning board that this, um, request be declined, please.
Okay. Once they are pleased with the board.
I would make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we would deny this request.
I second it.
Okay. All in favor of, uh, denying the request, raise your hand. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I just want to make one, one quick clarification too before we move on. There were some comments about the, the letters going out to the property owners. I just want to make sure everybody's aware. When we send out mail notices for rezoning requests, uh, we, we measure off a hundred feet from the property line and that's who gets a mailed notice. State law actually requires us to send them to all the adjacent property owners. So a hundred feet, we go out basically beyond that. So if there are properties that are not a hundred feet wide, it would still pick up the ones across from it. And we even picked up a couple of extra ones just to make sure we weren't excluding some from, from blocks or that were in there. But, uh, like I said, everybody within a hundred feet of the property should have gotten a mailed notice and those did go out on May sixth as the letter's dated, so.
You know how many was in that hundred feet?
It was, uh, there's a list on, in your packet. I think it was twenty. It was twenty property owners, yes, sir.
The whole neighborhood, twenty, got love.
And again, that picked up, uh, the adjacent properties, picked up the ones across the street from it and all the ones along the backside on Jennifer Place in Brittany Ridge.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And again, also, um, we, we, when we do mail out notices for the planning board, um, we do, we essentially do that as a courtesy because the state law only requires that we send out mail notices for the public hearing at the commissioner's level. So when we notify people for planning board, we do that more as a courtesy, but we go above and beyond that, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, as a, as a point of information, uh, on Mr. Baldwin's letter, we did vote on to, uh, continue, to, uh, continue with this, uh, at that time, didn't we? Did we vote on that?
No, we voted, we just voted a while ago to deny their, their request for the zoning.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I rescind.
Thank you.
Is that not correct? James? We had, we could.
What I heard as far as the motion, um, you went ahead and took action in making a recommendation to the commissioners to recommend denial and in so doing, it's moot as to whether you even discuss the continuation now. So we're moving forward with, uh, forwarding your recommendation on to the commissioners and holding a public hearing there.
Right, they can have.
And that's the way I understood the motion.
Thank you.
So this here, for the audience, this here will go to the county commissioner. You can watch the paper and when they have the meeting up there, you, and you encourage up there and, and express your concerns.
Yes, sir. It's scheduled for June twentieth.
June the twentieth and they appear in the same room.
Yes, sir.
At, uh, six o'clock.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, next, uh, Chris, what was in our next review?
All right, next is the development review portion. Good evening. I'm here to present Wildflower Ridge, Section Two, Limonary Platte. It's a major subdivision. Uh, Wildflower Ridge is located on Heinz Drive Extension west of its intersection with Aiden Golf Club Road. Uh, it's located in the Aiden Township, uh, twenty-four lots on just over twenty-four acres. Uh, you'll see here a vicinity map. Uh, the red arrow points to the location. It's just east of the town of Aiden, right outside the town of Aiden's planning jurisdiction. The lot itself here is highlight or outlined in the red dash. Uh, some comments on the site. It's not within the one-hundred-year floodplain. It's owned rural residential, which requires a minimum of twenty-five thousand square feet. Electricity is provided by the town of Aiden and water is provided by Eastern Pines Water Corporation. We have sent out letters to adjacent property owners and have not received any comments or concerns on this subdivision. Now I'll go over some conditions and requirements.
Okay.
Bellflower Drive shall have a temporary cul-de-sac at its terminus. Um, this is for emergency vehicle access. Fire hydrant located at Lot twenty-five shall be located at the intersection of Casby Court and Bellfire Drive. Let's see. Uh, the ditch located on lots nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one is subject to the riparian buffer rules. Staff recommends that a stubout be placed in the vicinity of Lot eight. Uh, the next slide is a map that shows where, um, this recommended stubout is. It's in the red lines. So this aerial is a little zoomed out. Um, the stubout would face parcel one-six-two-three-three, which is closer to Aiden Golf Club Road. This is to show the, why the stubout is necessary. There's plenty of room for future development. So here's some pictures of the proposed sub, of the site. This is standing on Heinz Drive facing where the subdivision would go. Um, this is standing, looking towards Aiden Golf Club Road along Heinz Drive. This is facing west. Again, on Heinz Drive is to your right. And this is standing at the back of the proposed subdivision facing Heinz Drive. The technical review committee recommends conditional approval. Uh, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them at this time.
Mr. Chairman.
Chris, um, when we did our site visit on, what was it, Monday?
Yes, sir.
Right. Uh, on the stubout, you were saying that on this road, um, how many units did you say would be for the county? How many housing would be placed on the county side? I think you said three or four?
Where is that? Here we go. On the county side.
Down on the front side when we, where we were sitting?
Oh, so what, what's already approved is the front four lots. Those are a minor subdivision. So we'll have four there and in addition to that will be twenty-four more along the roads. Thank you for the question. Thank you.
We have any, we have a public hearing. Is anybody here for a public hearing on this site?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, board members. I'm Mike Baldwin. I represent Don Edmondson. He's the manager of DHE Farms, LSC. And I've got a handout again for you.
Thank you. Mike. Thank you.
All right, and, uh, I'll just, I'm not up here to, uh, other than one concern and that's, that's the stubout. I got a call from planning staff during the review of this, uh, subdivision and they were asking for a stubout to the east. And, um, we've already stubbed out to the south in Mr. A.T. Vinner's land. We are, uh, requesting not to have to stub out to the east for various reasons. A lot of the information that I present before y'all, whether it be the hearing before this, whether it be this hearing or any other hearings, a lot of it's subjective and a lot of it is objective. The subjective part of the reasoning not to, uh, request not to have to stub to the east is the likelihood of this being connection being looped into Aiden Golf Club Road. And then what we're gonna have is cut through traffic. I completely agree with interconnectivity. I think it's great. But I think there's, there's a limit to it, uh, to protect from, uh, cut through traffic. So that, that is subjective though. What is objective is what it cost Don Edmondson. Don Edmondson's been building houses in Greenville and Pitt County for over twenty-five years. He, uh, withstood the storm of the plummet of the economy, uh, that happened in two thousand and eight that as we've seen in the last twelve to eighteen months, we are thankfully, uh, it appears we're coming out of. He's weathered that storm. The home, uh, the home sales in Pitt County and Greenville have gone up. But what hadn't gone up is the, uh, the home sale prices. What hasn't also gone up is since the home sale prices have not gone up, the lot prices have not gone up. Uh, what hasn't also gone up is since the home sale prices have not gone up, the lot prices have not gone up. What has gone up is the infrastructure cost. The cost of building the road and building the water line, the drainage and everything uh, associated with that. That is completely objective. The road stub, the lots are two hundred and fifty feet deep. So to the center line of the road uh, would be two hundred and seventy-five feet. That cost right there is just shy of forty-five thousand dollars. So we have a forty-five thousand dollar hit right off the top. Then you lose a lot. The lot values on these type of lots with curbing gutter is, can I talk just a little bit longer? I'll be short, though. Is thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars. So now you've got seventy-seven thousand three hundred dollars. If the interconnectivity is connected to, you have a corner lot that doesn't have privacy anymore. Don Edmondson has been adamant about, in the last few years, when things started taking off again, has been adamant about installing curbing gutter in the neighborhoods he does. He doesn't want ditch sections, he doesn't want people to have to pipe their ditches. He doesn't want erosion control when we're in construction to come out there all the time. He wants it easy to get DOT to accept it. I'm just asking, we have met the intent in, in my degree of interconnectivity. There's things about the parcel size, when this board can decide whether it's uh, you allow it to be exempt or not for uh, interconnectivity, we've provided one. The parcel to the south is ninety-three acres that Mr. A.T. Vinner's owns. The parcel to the east is sixty-six acres. No, they're not, uh, well, one is approximately four times as large as this. The one to the east is a little, little less than three, but they're not huge tract of land. But I think they're large enough in the fact that we don't want a possible cut through to Aiden Golf Course Road. And the fact that we have stubbed to A.T. Vinner's land is enough to bring this before you, let you decide on it. With that said, I'll close and um, be glad to answer any questions.
Would there be any questions?
I have questions with Chris on the stubout. Chris, this is the same question I asked you in the van. I love this. Um, yeah, we had the same question in the van about the stubout. So could you explain to, to, to the audience, um, what you said to us about the stubout? How, the reasoning that staff wants this?
Well, staff wants it for several reasons. One is just general interconnectivity, uh, better flow of traffic. Um, if you'll look on the, the aerial I have here, it's a very large piece of property next door. Um, you know, just to help avoid congestion along the major highways. But a, a real large concern is for any interconnectivity is of course, emergency vehicle access. How quickly can they get to the houses, say there's a fire or some other kind of emergency? So, thank you for that question.
Is, so is there already an existing stubout that, that, and you're wanting him to add a second stubout? Is that correct?
There is one stubout leading, let me find, there's one stubout leading to the um, south of the property, which would enter Aiden's planning jurisdiction. Um, the planning or, uh, subdivision ordinance says at least one stubout, but more can be required depending on how the subdivision administrator feels and how the planning board feels.
Mike, uh, you don't wanna have a stubout at all?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Baldwin. Um, I wasn't, I think I met, I met y'all halfway.
Right.
Uh, I've got a stub to the south. Um, I'm just, uh, I, I, I'd have a lot of audacity to come up here and say, no stub at all. Um, no, there is a stub to the south. So we have, we are in the spirit of the ordinance. I'm just asking not?
One second.
To have the burden of a, almost an eighty thousand dollar burden, plus, and, and I agree, uh, emergency vehicles is paramount. But I still think we've fallen into the, in, in, in line with the spirit of the ordinance.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we accept it as it is. So. Our motion that we accept it as it is and suck it. Any other discussion? Everybody vote? Raise your hand for yes, others against? Okay. Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure we captured, Mr. Kennedy, you were opposed to that, right?
Yes, 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 I'm in. Cause I think we need that second stubout, or even, because we looked at the lot size, and also uh, for emergency uses. Cause we wanna hear about someone got trapped in there and couldn't get in. Thank you.
Uh, just some informational items for the board, and I appreciate your uh, involvement with the discussion tonight. And I can tell that you are, are taking this seriously with these items that are coming before you. They're not always cut and dried, so that's why we have public comment, that's why we want you uh, to ask staff questions. So um, we are making the best decisions as possible. So with that, I'll go on to the informational items, several things in your package, just to keep you up to date on the Candlewick Sewer Project. You may recall, the funding for that came through the county. We uh, received three million dollars to extend sewer out to Candlewick off of Stan, Stantonsburg Road. That project's moving along, we've had some program amendments, because there's a possibility of upfitting that, or enlarging the line in the service area to uh, allow for future development. So that will involve Greenville Utilities, there's a lot of discussions still going on, the design's still going on. So uh, we've been before the commissioners to ask for a couple of amendments to the program that would help facilitate further that discussion. And hopefully, we'll have a decision on that in the upcoming months. So Candlewick continues to move on. Wanted to report back to you about your uh, text amendment for the cemetery setbacks. That was approved by the commissioners uh, last month, and so that is now in effect. Um, Henny Hill Solar Farm, uh, this didn't necessarily come before you, but just so you know, one of uh, the requirements of our ordinance, the zoning ordinance, is that for a conditional use permit, that work needs to start. In this case, Solar Farm, those panels, that construction work needs to start within six months. It had not, so the developers had requested a time extension of an additional six months, and that was granted by the commissioners as well. Uh, Ms. Shonda Slemaker, another conditional use permit, hers had expired a couple of times. This time, she was diligent, and she's moved forward with actually completing that. And uh, so she now has a residential daycare at her home. Um, also, um, just to let you know, the county was one of ten um, areas that were throughout the nation that received funding to attend an Action Institute that was through the Center of Disease Control. Uh, the funding came from there, we traveled, there were six members on this team, one from city council, one from DOT, um, I also attended, and we had several other folks that attended. And this is to help us, as we're developing a plan for the Metropolitan Planning Organization, and that encompasses Greenville, Aiden, Winterville, Simpson, and areas in the county surrounding those municipalities. We're developing a, what's now termed, an active transportation plan. Basically, these are your greenways, these are your bike paths, these are other alternative ways of providing transportation to folks or recreation here in the area. So we gained a lot of good information from having traveled to this institute. Uh, also, to help facilitate this, the city and the MPHO has now moved forward with a plan of action. We have a consultant online to actually develop this plan. So the information we've received will only help us as we continue to develop this plan. Uh, some other items, uh, those of you that might have been on here when we dealt with uh, rezoning to move the switching yard, the CSX switching yard from the city of Greenville out to the area between State and Mill Road and NC 903 North. Uh, there's been some issues of late with noise in that area, uh, trains idling, idling right beside folks' houses. So the commissioners at Monday night's meeting um, did uh, support a resolution to send a CSX and some other individuals to ask them to operate the yard as they had agreed to do originally. The switching yard itself, for those of you that may not be familiar with it, is about seven hundred or so feet south of State and Mill. And if the trains were idling down there, it would be away from some of those homes. But a lot of times, a lot of, sometimes twice a day, they're being parked right up by these residences. So uh, very noisy and very uh, causing a lot of disturbance.
Must speak, must speak to that. In fact, one of my, one of the guys who works with us lives directly across the road, uh, Pugmore Road, which they are actually parking in between Pugmore and State and Mill as opposed to the other side of State and Mill, and that's the issue. The houses are right there, and all hours of, of the night, you know, and so I, I, I agree with what they're.
And, and I will tell you, staff has been actively involved in contacting CSX. We have contacts there, and it might improve for a day or two, or maybe even a week, and then it would revert right back. So I, I think the residents were fed up with it, some of the commissioners were concerned about it. So the resolution has been uh, approved, and we'll be distributing that. One thing uh, I wanted to bring before you is also an item that was dealt with at Monday night's meeting. The Teal Property, that's out on Old River Road, just know, some rezonings will be coming through um, based on some discussion that was had with the commissioners Monday night. Uh, basically, we'll be looking at some property that was, was zoned initially back in two thousand and one, and the owners are looking to have some properties downzoned to the current residential area, and also some upzoned to a commercial area. So uh, we'll be bringing that for you. Don't know if it'll be next month, but sometime this upcoming summer. Uh, Mr. Ricky Hines has been involved with the next item some, uh, Pitt County Farm and Food Council. We've got the blessing of the commissioners uh, last month to form a new group here that would actually look at some of the issues of food insecurities and other things that deal with farming and/or having uh, good fresh fruits and vegetables available to folks throughout the county. Uh, we're actively involved with a group now that's helping lead this charge. And uh, I will tell you, it seems to be very timely right now. Um, we were at a meeting last night with Senator Don Davis. There's some other legislation at the state level that really helps promote a lot of the ideas we've been batting around with the Farm and Food Council. More than likely, we'll have these appointments uh, towards the end of the year. So any of you, or the viewing public that might be interested in being involved with this, it would be a good time to go ahead and start uh, considering whether you'd like to have your application in to be considered as an appointee to this council. Uh, the other items uh, in your report, all our monthly reports for February, March, and April, a lot of other correspondence and items in there, and did just want to make you aware, another recognition for the county, uh, planning staff and other individuals with the county did nominate our county home complex. It includes um, the farmer's market, as well as the district park, uh, Village of Yesteryear, Wintergreen Schools, community garden, a whole lot of activities, council on aging out there. And we nominated it for a great place for healthy living, because if you're out there, you got a lot of opportunities to walk the trail, garden, pick up some fresh fruits and vegetables, a lot of items that you can be involved with. Uh, pleased to announce, we did win the competition.
Congratulations.
There were several that were in the running, we were one of the six finalists, and then won the uh, People's Choice Award. So we'll be picking that up at this year's uh, planning conference in September. And did get noticed today, they'll also want us to make a presentation of sorts during one of the sessions at the conference. So we're very pleased to have this recognition, you might have seen it in the paper this week, already got a little publicity about it. But we're encouraged of this, and again, the county home property, if you haven't been out there to see the activities of late, you really need to go out there, check out the community garden, check out the farmer's market, it's in full swing now. So uh, we encourage everybody to take a walk out there at the district park while you're there too. That's all we have for tonight, Mr. Chairman. Other than our county website, got a lot of information on there as well.
All right, nothing else coming for the board, we sit and adjourn.